To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father who art in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening and express our appreciation and our love for thee and the opportunities we have to live in a free country where we are able to meet as we are tonight and to discuss our local affairs and to hopefully manage them in a manner that would be pleasing unto thee and to those people who live here and shop and reside in in Riverdale City. Father, we call upon thee this time to bless our council as they go forth and make these decisions tonight, that their minds will be open and mindful of those who will be affected by these things, that they will make decisions that are good and beneficial to the city. We also call upon thee, Father, to bless our national leaders, that in these times of difficulties throughout the world, that they might be inspired to make decisions that will bring peace to the world and help us all to get along and to do those things that are beneficial to all mankind. Again, Father, we thank thee for all of those done for us and we offer this prayer unto thee in the holy name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Casey and Steve. We love God, country, and community. We'll now go to public comment. If you have something that you'd like to bring forward before the council, please do so now. Go ahead, start walking up on the spiel. Try to limit it to three minutes. We can't, we can't take action right now, but we'll.
I know it.
Okay.
I'm James Richard Perrine. I'm four ten North Harrison, Ogden, Utah. I'm here in opposition concerning ordinance nine nine five amending Riverdale City Code Title Ten, Chapter Eight, Agricultural Rules. When my property was annexed from Ogden City to Riverdale, it was for the purpose of providing services so that at one point we could develop. And when we were originally purchasing the land, it was M one and somehow it got changed to agricultural one throughout the time. And we've had a chance to rezone it, and that was denied. And so I'm here with regards to kind of stating a reason why I'm opposed to it. One was that we were brought over for the purpose of providing services to develop. I also have a small little thing I'm going to read real fast. I've been in contact with Brandon since November of twenty first of last year concerning our property and zoning. On the second of December, I talked to Brandon and he informed me that he had spoken with the planning commission about amending the general plan for a rezone of our property. On the twenty eighth of January, I talked to Brandon again and informed me that he was preparing an application to the planning commission to consider a rezone of our property and that it was almost completed at that time. On the twenty seventh of March, I contacted Brandon again after doing some research to A one zoning and discussed the idea of a treatment program as well as looking to other options due to how we did not want to be in perpetual gridlock with the city. The twenty seventh of March of this year, I again spoke with Brandon and he stated that he would want to talk more about his understanding of the previous conversation with regards to the residential and that if we were in agreement with my, with his position, if that is, if I was in agreement with his position, the city council for a rezone on behalf of the city administrator, which I was. So he stated that at this time, if he had been working for some time on it and that he wanted to, you know, let him know that's what he wanted to do and so I informed him that my preference continues to be with housing, smaller lots and homes to provide affordable housing. But that at the same time, I had a professor when I was in college that told me, don't put all your eggs in one basket. So therefore I was telling him that we were looking at other options in case we are not going to be able to rezone our property and that we are going to be stuck with A one. And so we've been looking into the cluster subdivision aspect that's in the writing of it and that we could do based on the current A one. But we've been waiting for Brandon to clarify with the city what was going to, if it was going to amend and rezone our land. And so we've been acting in good faith, waiting for this, and we were kind of surprised when we saw this consideration to amend the A one after I had only talked to him a couple months earlier about looking at other options for our A one. And so this amendment kind of caught me by surprise that he didn't try to approach you guys about rezoning before trying to amend what other options that we could have. And so I'm kind of surprised by that, to be honest with you, because you've been working on it for seven months now, but it only took two months to try to, you know, change the wording of how we can use our property, and I'm not sure what that's about. However, I am opposed of it just because of the wording of cluster subdivision, kind of more limits my property. I wanted to just state the fact that the reason for that we were brought over was to provide services that we really all approached Ogden City and that's why we brought, were brought over, that you guys attempted to rezone me in two thousand and six and I wanted to be left as M one. And I remember talking to you, Mr. Brooks, at that time, saying that I was not opposed, I was not okay with changing my zoning because at that time I still was under the impression I was manufacturing. At the same time, we've done all the engineering, which is supportive of development, which has also been stated that if our land is developed, that the place down there will be safer if it were to develop. I have had no engineering that's contrary to our land being developed. And so it's safer if it's developed and provide, we are brought over to provide services and that's why I do not want it changed because that part there allows us to at least look at a cluster housing if we are not going to be able to rezone our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, public.
This is actually one that was sent in by a resident in writing.
What's that? Oh, okay.
Asked me to read it during public comment, so.
Okay.
So she said, hello, my name is Cassie Anderson and I live in Riverdale and reaching out to hopefully to the correct person. Regarding the idea of two developments, I feel would be useful and beneficial to Riverdale City. I would attend the city meeting, however, I work the days and times they're held, so I've resorted to email. Hope my email reaches the appropriate person. I had to put it all in there. I'd be more than happy to contact anyone else I need to. First being, I would like to see a gym built in Riverdale, more specifically of Vasa. We're forced to choose Clinton City or Ogden or Twelfth Street daily, which adds a lot of time to commute with this time and money, could be funding our own city. Second, I would like to see more EV chargers. Ideally, a few free ones or a Tesla supercharger, the nearest superchargers in Far West or Salt Lake City. They may need to reach, this may need to reach Tesla as well, but with the dealership in, it would be ideal to have a supercharger nearby. There are some cities around Farmington City, for example, that provide free slow chargers. That would be a very kind thing to see our tax dollars go towards. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other comment, we'll move on to our presentations and reports. There is no mayor report and city administration report. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Department heads are all here. You have their reports in your packet. Do you have any questions or concerns or anything you want addressed in regards to any of that material? If you come across something here as I'm proceeding through here, feel free to hit me up about that. In looking at our Riverdale City sales tax report, I brought this up again last month. It was encouraging to see, again, we're maintaining that same trend. We're just slightly behind twenty twenty-two, but ahead of both twenty-three and twenty-four. So that's good. However, I would add in there, because I always have to be the stick in the mud on this thing, one of the big banks projected some forecasts within the next year and it didn't sound really good as far as sales go. In fact, I think just the most recent reports came back and they were lower than what they projected for this past month, but so far it's looking good and we're encouraged by it. So that little graph's in your, in your packet there. Our general fund revenue at ninety percent of the fiscal year is in good shape. If you saw that one, if you see each of the department heads, we are at or below the ninety-two percent in every one but two categories, community development, community services, and they're just slightly above, but that's not surprising because they have things that really bombard them right now. So that'd probably level out by over the next month. The rest of them are all below that, so we're in good shape on those as well. Employee recognition, we have none with an actual anniversary date. However, we do have Mr. Taylor here tonight with eleven years, so congratulations to Rich and Michelle at four years. So we appreciate both of them. They do great work for us and we're grateful to have them and hope they stay a lot longer than that. The staffing authorization plan remains, that's outlined in your packet. I would make mention, and we did earlier, about some new hires. We have a new police officer and then there's been some restructuring both within the police department and fire department, but as I mentioned, we'll bring that up next month. We'll bring those in and get them sworn in, do our regular ceremonies that we do for them. So the new officer's on board and going and everything's looking good so far, so we like to see that.
Where did he come from?
It's a she. She came from probation parole. So that would give us our second female on the, on the force, so. She's right in the middle. She completed her FDO yet, so she's still in the middle of it, so just getting her field training, but so far everything's looking good. We're excited about that. Community development report, Brandon, you want to touch upon that just really quick?
Yeah, you have the, the usual cast of characters in the packet there. Everything is progressing as normal. We did receive an update from America First on some of the work that they're doing on the Hill. That's going well. There was a small setback on the roundabout with some of the cement work that was in place. They had to tear out and replace a few things, but it seems like they've got that back on track. So everything seems to be happening. We don't have any new development applications in the, in the system at this point, so we're just tracking the ones that are currently underway.
Do we have any dates on anything yet, like along there?
The hillside, you mean?
No. What am I thinking of? Panera and?
Oh, Panera, from my estimation, is behind. I haven't received word from the general contractor specifically, but they had a July targeted opening day and that's likely not going to happen. I think it was the first week in July. And Trader Joe's is still looking August-ish time, although their, their sales tax license has a date of December, so we're going to look into that and see if it's August, October, December. What month is it?
I saw they cut the door finally, so that's kind of exciting.
Yeah. Or whatever that store's going to be, we just.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we had any interest from a gym to come into Riverdale? I've actually had someone besides that Cassie reach out to me and they, we're hoping maybe we could entice Vasa or another place to come into the old RC Willie or one of those.
I asked the RC Willie guys if they had ever received interested party and they said no. That would be the only vacant building that I know of that would accommodate a gym like that. If Joanne's does leave that location and vacates that space, that could likely be a good candidate and a good location.
But you haven't heard from any gyms?
No, nothing specifically.
Okay.
I think the Planet Fitness is in Roy right on nineteen hundred, pretty close. Are they still there? Are they close? Okay. I don't go to the gym.
It's a BLS or something like that that's on fifty-seven.
Yeah, it was funny, the person who reached out to me said the same thing that Cassie did, that she asked to either drive to Twelfth Street or out west in Roy.
Especially for Vasa.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
The only other thing I'd add on to that, somewhat community development related, but if you've driven up through the West Bench, we had kind of a major incident up there a week ago or two weeks ago on the roundabout. It was getting close to being completed and they ended up having to rip the whole thing out because there were some elevations that were off, so they had to back up. That's going to set them back a little bit, but just so you know, I don't know if it was anybody's, certainly not anybody from the city's fault, but somebody's going to take it in the shorts on that one because they were moving along quite well, but it will slow it down. I haven't been up there yet this week, but I know they put it at a top priority. They weren't too happy about it either, so if you get asked questions, it was just, just one of those things that happens sometimes, awfully expensive one. But other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to the farmer's market proposal. We talked about it in the previous meeting. Is there anything to add?
So Matthew. They're here, they're the ones that put the proposal together? Don't know. Michelle, were they talking about that?
I just put it as a presentation because I wasn't sure what was.
That's fine. Come, come on up and give a proposal that. You gotta hurry, though.
That's insane.
I just meant walking up here, you have to hurry. You don't have to hurry in the proposal.
Oh, okay. That's fine. We know you guys had a farmer's market last year and then that company pulled out and we were looking for other locations to do farmer's market. We currently run the farmer's market in Syracuse, West Point, and Sunset City, and we thought Riverdale would be another good location and we've kind of felt sad that the other company left, so we thought maybe we would jump in and help out with that.
So I, I'm in charge of marketing and we're gonna do a different, like, different strategy. And we like to, like, share about, like, the vendors, their story, what they're doing in their business and the local business, how we are helping them. And it's pretty fun, the community comes and it's just, we have so much fun with the other markets and we love doing it. This is our full-time business and so we like to help Riverdale too. We like to work with Syracuse, all the cities in West Point and Sunset. Yeah, so I don't know if you have any questions or anything.
Have you seen where it was last year?
Yeah.
Did you happen to make it over any of times? And is that the size roughly that you would expect it to continue to be or?
We actually would anticipate it based on the size of the city to be bigger than that. Our markets average about thirty-five to forty vendors a week.
And there was only like, probably less than twenty?
Fifteen or twenty.
I just, the next question is, is there enough room over there, do you think that they would?
We'd have to go over and look, but I just not sure if there's another spot that's, you know, easy accessible, because that's kind of the thing with a market, you want to make sure you're drawing people in. Otherwise, you're not going to get the traffic you want.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was what I, my experience going to that market was that it, it didn't have a huge number of vendors, you know, as many as I would have expected. They were a little different than what I was expecting a farmer's market to be. And so I, I kind of felt that that might have been one of the limiting things for the prior one was the, just the number of vendors that they had, but at the same time, in the space that they were in, they seemed fairly full. And I, I don't know that I would, I'm not sure that I could see thirty-five vendors in a, in the site that they were in. So I just, you know, just putting that out there, hoping that there would be, I don't know if there's other places that we could put it.
We, we've looked at that and we run into problems and everything. I think there's probably more room to get vendors down there. Our big concern as a city is the parking issue. The one thing we can't have is have people going into the fire station parking lot. That's just a no-no. So somehow, once those lots, the lower lots are filled up and the roads filled up, you're going to have to get them up into the bigger building to park because otherwise there's not going to be much parking. And the crowds we've been getting from the new playground equipment and the splash pad and whatnot's bigger than what we're used to having over there, so that will most definitely be an issue, parking.
When we were talking some weeks and months back, when we were doing the ramp grants, there was one that was for an outdoor classroom that was a permanent infrastructure that was tentatively said to be put over in that area that you're talking about. Now, can that overlap? I don't know. It, I don't know how, I haven't seen a design on it, but I only bring that up as to say, I see that being congested here quickly, but anyway, that's just an observation.
I don't, Michelle, that's not going to start this fall, will it? It's pushing it into next year, so I think we're okay on that part for this year. Yeah, but I don't think it'd be heavily involved. I think we'll be okay this year. Next year could be a different story, but it, and it doesn't affect the whole thing, but it's going to be right in the middle of that, so.
And my, my intent is not to discourage you. I want to, I'd like to see a farmer's market. I thought it was a great idea. I, I'm not sure that what was there was great. Want something great.
We, we do Sunset City and Sunset is a really small city and we've been very successful there. And I know like, like, Riverdale has more traffic, they have more people, and I think it's gonna grow. It has a big potential here, so it's the reason I talked to him, like, because Sunset is only one mile and it's very high, like, their market, and we're very successful there. How we cannot be successful in Riverdale when they have more people, they have more traffic, they have more businesses, so I think the potential is there and I think it's going to be good for the community of people who comes to Riverdale. Oh, there is a market in Riverdale and they can buy their fresh honey, bread, or like produce and like a food truck, they can come, like, it's just, it's just very fun, so.
What's your thought on the season? Is it a fall thing? Does it go into the summer? What?
We usually do our markets between May and September.
Well, we're thinking to start it in July.
For this one, we're doing July, October is what we were thinking.
After the fourth. So I don't know what you think.
So just work with the, the city. I don't think there's any action that we need to take with the council. You just work with the city and get that put together.
Thanks for your interest, though.
Good luck.
It's exciting.
Okay, moving on to consent items. Consideration to approve meeting minutes from June third, twenty twenty-five, council work session and June third, twenty twenty-five, council meeting. Any changes to the minutes that anyone identified? No changes? You need a motion? So move? Have a motion? Second? We have a second. All those that can approve that, say yes.
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 I guess I vote two, right? Yes? Okay. Moving on to action items, we're going to change up the order as stated in the other meeting to move item number six to number one, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, renewing the exclusive towing agreement with Stoffer Towing. Chief Warren.
Put him on the spot. All right, like we spoke before, the contract renewal is for services provided through Stoffers Towing. We've been in a partnership now, sounds like for about fifteen years. Been working with this guy my entire career. He's been in the industry for, forever. And a big part of the reason why we're wanting to renew the contract, not going out for other bids, is because the services that are provided to our patrons, not only the patrons, but the police department, you know, when we're out there on a busy traffic accident and they can get there promptly, work with our team to clean up the accident, to get the road up and going, that's important to us. It's important to the people that are shopping here, it's important to the people that are living here, and I feel like they've done an excellent job in that regard. So with that being said, we would ask for your support in renewing that contract and then we're open for questions if you have any for me or Chuck. Chuck is our, my point of contact. I call Chuck anytime, any day, twenty-four seven, he'll pick up the phone and he's there to help solve whatever issues we have in regards to the tow services, so.
Having been in an accident on Riverdale Road and having to have my vehicle towed and they did a great job, they were there quick, had it all taken care of and it was not a painful experience.
I'm glad to hear that. Well, and thanks for the support, like Steve was talking about with the, during the tornado and all the stump removal and the support, you know, I think going to bid every two years is, it would be a travesty, you know? It's good to have the loyalty and all that kind of stuff on both sides.
Well, I, I've been a part of the city since the police department, the fire department was over on seven hundred West. I don't even think he was out of grade school.
Nice.
I, I'm a resident of Riverdale and, and, you know, I love the town as it is and we're community oriented, so we're more than happy to come out and help. I mean, if we have a flood situation, another windstorm, we have a disaster of any kind. I mean, my company has over, over a hundred trucks that are at a disposal at any time. We have probably forty to fifty of them here locally, so.
So you can put a couple in the parade?
They are, actually. They got a couple.
Actually, we are, and we always provide service for the parade just in case a float breaks down or somebody needs to have their car moved, I mean, because it's in the way.
They're typically staged nine hundred West, forty-four hundred South, they block an intersection.
Right.
And they're there just for that reason and they, we don't even ask them to do it. They just call and say, hey, we're here.
Guess that joke didn't work, huh?
But they are going to be in the parade this year with a couple, a couple rigs, so. They were last year as well.
Right, right. So like I said, we're, we're happy to do this, we, we love doing it. I'm very, very passionate about it. I'm the safety director for the company, so any issues that we have with a driver or a resident or whatever the case may be lands at my desk and then Casey and I get it worked out.
Another cool thing is, is they work with the fire department with providing some vehicles to them so they can work on extrication. So when we have a serious accident, you know, they, they participate in the training because they're part of that team as far as maybe moving the truck to get the, the patient out, and so they work with the fire department as well through some of that training and then obviously with some of our guys.
We, we had that conversation out in the hallway just a minute ago, so we're part of the Gary Sinise First Responders Training. If anybody knows who he is, he's the actor in Forrest Gump, but he has a foundation for first responders, for firefighters. We're involved with their operation where we provide cement mixers, semis, whatever the case may be, stage them for heavy recovery. So we train as well as us being trained, so it works out as a, as a good, good working relationship.
Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead. Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, authorizing execution of an agreement with Stoffers Towing for non-consent vehicle towing services within Riverdale City. It's twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that. I had it as twenty-five, so.
Yeah.
It's.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. You said twenty-four.
It is twenty, it says twenty-four on there.
The one I have says twenty-four.
Mine says twenty-five.
Which one is it, Michelle?
Oh, they're looking at the actual resolution, has the wrong number at the top.
Oh.
Oh, the resolution does? The agenda has it listed as twenty-five, so amend that resolution then.
Okay.
As part of your motion.
Well, amend the resolution to be resolution number twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
And the second agree?
Second agrees.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you pull the council, please?
Uh, Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being on the team.
Thank you.
Supporting those that are, we should give you like Riverdale shirts and stuff, like some swag.
Thank you, counsel.
One last comment. I was on the, I was only on till two thousand and eight, so it had, if it's every two years, it had to have been either two thousand and five or two thousand and seven when we did the first one, so twenty years.
It's been a long time.
Well, I was doing, I was doing it before there was a contract.
Yeah, and you know, just, just to speak to that, just real quick, I was on the ops board for dispatch and it, we, we frequently talked about the tow rotations and the problems with tow companies and so all the, at the time I was lieutenant, all the lieutenants and assistant chiefs were there and we'd spend an hour in every one of these meetings working out problems that happened with tow companies, never Riverdale. And I used to always say, we don't have those issues with Stoffers, we have a contract, it works perfect, and it was a bragging note for us all the time. And then they finally jumped on board and they kind of do something very similar now, so it's been good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on again with a change on the agenda, item number five, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. Okay, moving on again with a change on the agenda, item number five, consideration of resolution 2025 dash 24, adding personnel policy 9 dash 20 Americans with Disabilities Act to the personnel, uh, policy handbook. Ms. Cuomo.
So, we probably should have had this policy in place long ago. Um, I was doing an audit on our personnel policies just to make sure we had everything in there we needed and realized this was missing. So that's where this came from. Counselor Hanson did have some changes to the original policy that was submitted that she wanted to see. And I marked that original up and handed that to you at the work session. The reason we need this policy is to ensure reasonable accommodations are provided to qualified individuals, establish a clear, consistent process for requesting and reviewing accommodations, and to comply with all applicable federal and state laws. Any questions?
Questions? Any, any questions on the amendments? The Hanson amendments?
Not the Hanson, but thanks for making them. I appreciate it. They were just things that I've had issues with myself, so I thought they would help.
No more comments or questions? We could use a motion.
Can do that. Uh, move to approve resolution, resolution number 2025 24, a resolution adopting an amendment to the Riverdale City Personnel Policy and Procedures Handbook.
I'll second.
We would need the amendments.
Oh, with the, with the, uh, additional amended document we received in the, uh, work session today.
Second agrees?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We could pull the council.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Passes. And she just walks out. Okay, um, back on the agenda. We're ready for a public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding the nonreciprocal inter-fund activity transfer of resources utilized by city's general fund as provided by the city's water fund. We would need a motion.
Move to open a public hearing? As stated.
Have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The public hearing is now open. Any comments? Seeing none? Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion passes, um, unanimously. Moving on to consideration of resolution 2025 dash 21, approving the nonreciprocal inter-fund activity transfer as stated within the packet. Cody?
I don't have anything else to add unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions? Comments?
I just wanna say that, you know, it, it may just be a, a entry in the books, but I like to see that we explain to, at least explain to the citizens how much water we use compared, you know, along with how much water they use. So that, uh, when I, when I was on the council, the, at the beginning, we didn't even have, um, uh, meters on it, right? On the parks, yeah. And so, you know, there was, there was no way of even knowing whether, just how much we were using, so. It's nice to at least know that we're using, that we're monitoring that and so thanks.
That's not a ton of water. It's how I spend over a thousand dollars a year on my city bill. It's like a hundred people is all-ish. Anyway, a motion, please? Okay?
Uh, move to approve resolution 2025 dash 21, adopting the nonreciprocal inter-fund transfer report concerning water utilization by Riverdale City.
Okay, and just for clarification, it's not a report, but we're transferring funds, right? Uh, motion? We need a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Michelle, if you can pull the council, please?
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consideration of resolution 2025 dash 22, accepting Riverdale City's certified property tax rate as calculated by the Weber County Auditor. Mr. Carden.
Thank you, Mayor PT. Um, so while we've been sitting here, it's changed again, so it's 2.001414. So I don't know, what happened is, just so you know the information, and we're gonna include it in the packet and then we got it and we thought we had it. Apparently Weber County decided to change their whole property tax system this, sometime. We don't know when. And when the state got it and started auditing it, they found discrepancies. So they made Weber County go back and start over. And so they were supposed to have us the information by June 8th and we didn't get it until the end of last week. And so they were running a week behind and, um, apparently it, it's not finalized even quite at this point. So as we talked in the work session, I would probably make the motion that it's the 1406, cause that's what we have in the budget and that's what we have. But then maybe add or whatever the county and the state ultimately determine the certified tax rate and revenues to be.
So, did you just barely get this 2.00? Did this just barely?
I have their website pull up and I've been watching it all day and like it's changed since our work session to now.
Like a stock ticker?
Yeah, well, it's not that exciting, but the boxes are filled in now and they weren't before.
So the way this works, I mean, they're trying to come up with a certain dollar value. And they, they have the property values and then they just have the tax rate to hit the dollar. So we have, you know, property values times X. And so that X is changing in order to equal the sum is all, so.
So what we're voting for is strictly the number?
Strictly this, normally we have to approve the rate. But I think this year where it's so wonky, we just need to say we're approving the certified tax rate, though it was this as of Thursday, but whatever the state and the county ultimately end at, whatever that certified tax rate is. So, cause that basically guarantees us the same amount of money as last year plus any growth, is counselor.
Just to clarify, you said 2.001414?
It went 2.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I heard that wrong.
Yeah, I did too.
Oh, it went 2, not like 2.
Again, it doesn't matter what the tax rate is because they just lowered our property value.
So it went up by point 000007 to be point 001414.
Dillo just said your house is worth half of what he thought it was, so.
I, I went back, um, on my entire thing and, and looked at the way things had changed and it's made me ill. Um, but our, our tax rate, the 06 one, was 8.7% larger than the tax rate when I purchased my house in 2001. Of course, the value of my house has tripled. So, overall, the fact that in the interim, we have had two property tax increases, one of 25% and one of 96%. And my taxes have increased, ah, now that, that was the one I couldn't remember.
I mean, you're sick to your stomach, so you wanna make everybody else sick?
Yeah, it, it was just, it was just an interesting, an interesting exercise that, that the rate, the rate actually hasn't changed very much, even though we've more than doubled our property tax rate in, in the interim. But because of the way that the state does it, it usually goes down every year as the values go up. But on an individual basis, you don't necessarily see it the same way. So, just thought it was interesting. If anybody wants to see the spreadsheet I have.
Um, with that said, we could have a motion?
Um, move to approve, move to approve a resolution adopting a tax rate for the city of Riverdale for fiscal year 2026, July 20, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, of 0.001406 as the county specified in the most recent update on Thursday. But that we will, um, actually adopt whatever the tax rate the county finalizes on with their final.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second that.
Have a motion and a second? Can you pull the council, please?
Yeah.
Now, can I just, real quick question? So this is, once, once they finally, whatever, that, that is the certified tax rate that we will live with whenever that come, i- is, is actually blast off. Is that, is that how?
Which, which gives us the same amount of money. So, so technically it, it just, it's a completely irrelevant what this number is, cause it just makes the equation worse.
And why are we, if it's irrelevant, why are we voting?
We have state laws that tell us we have to.
I know you're a favorite. I know you're.
You're, you just said it's irrelevant.
It is. So go ahead and abstain. Michelle, would you pull everybody but Bart?
I, I'm a jacting, this is, this is unprofessional, really unprofessional.
Okay, I, I apologize.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Um, we're now moving on to consideration of resolution 2025 dash 23, adopting the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year 2026. Mr. Carden.
Thank you. Um, so same thing as we talked in the work session, the only change has been to adjust the certified tax rate revenues to match what the county provided. So I would say the same thing, as you make the motion, that we've adjusted it to what it was on Thursday. If it changes with the rate, we would adjust the certified tax rate proceeds to match whatever the county and the state ultimately determine it to be. But as of Thursday, it was what was in the packet.
Any comments or questions? That motion would be in order?
Move to approve resolution number 2025 dash 23, a resolution adopting a budget for the city of Riverdale for fiscal year 2026, July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, including setting salaries for Riverdale City employees, including the, uh, property tax revenues as stated by the county for, with the report that we received on Thursday. But that we will make any adjustment that the county requires based on their final certified tax rate. And we will adjust the property taxes to account for that.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Michelle, will you pull the council, please?
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, we are now moving on to item number seven, consideration of ordinance 995, amending Riverdale City Code Title 10, Chapter 8, Agricultural Zoning A1 A2. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you very much. Uh, as I mentioned in the work session, um, what is before you tonight is really guidance from the general plan to start to move away from the current zoning map, which you see on the wall behind me and which is, um, part of our, our ordinance, uh, to our future land use map. And that requires, uh, not only zone changes, but, uh, changes to the text. You have the, uh, the red lines. If I may, I'll take just a minute and, and address Mr. Purine's comments. Is that okay?
Steve, are we okay with that?
It's, it's pretty specific and with our legal troubles and things like that, I don't know if we wanna, if that's really on the agenda.
I think it's part of the presentation on that, but is that?
I do have some pointed related questions, if that's a better way to do it.
Maybe that's probably a better option to use on something like that.
But I have some at least to get us moving.
I'm an open book.
You can kind of lead her in the answers.
Um, first, just to, can you explain a little bit what, uh, what the cluster subdivisions are?
Yeah, so cluster subdivisions are currently allowed in the A1 zone. It's a subdivision, it's, it acts almost like an overlay to the base zone. So it allows for a subdivi- a subdivision of single-family dwellings of 25 units or more. It can't be less than 25 units. And the minimum lot size is two-thirds of the, um, minimum lot size of the underlying zone, which in this case it applies to ag zones and residential zones. So you would have to, in order to qualify for a cluster subdivision, you'd have to build 25 or more lots. And in the A1 zone, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. So in order to, um, accommodate the two-thirds requirement, you'd have to build around 27,000 square feet minimum lot size.
So really, by removing the, the cluster subdivisions from that, it doesn't impact the opportunity to do like what was proposed before, like the patio homes or the smaller residential homes or, because those were a zoning change anyway, I assume. Or even maybe like townhouses, cause those aren't really a cluster, cause it can't fit 25.
So, so right now it's single-family homes, so that's the unit type. So if, if you applied that with the cluster subdivision ordinance, it would be tw- um, single-family home types only.
So really like what we were looking at before in some areas of the city, there had to be a zoning change to accommodate like those smaller family, single-family homes.
Right, well, the R145 is our smallest, um, minimum lot size. And so we, we specifically made that zone change to, uh, account for the smaller homes. And that's kind of the purpose and intent of this proposed change is to, um, allow for a residential development within the confines of a residential zone, not in the con- context of an agricultural zone. And right now that's what the current language does. It shoehorns you, residential uses in an agricultural context because there's not a whole lot of other places it fits. And so the proposal would basically say that if there was a, a desire to take a currently zoned ag lot and make it a residential subdivision, that we would just rezone that appropriately to a residential zone that applies.
Okay. So with, um, and that makes sense to me that we wouldn't want like a high-density 25-plus units in an agriculture area. I mean, especially working for Box Elder, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So that makes sense to me. Because, um, from what he mentioned during his comments, Mr. Purine, um, is there a pending application? Should we give some leeway on that so that there is still? What is the advice on that if there's something currently being discussed between the city and?
So everything that he mentioned was accurate. I've been talking with him in good faith to, um, find solutions for his desire to develop his property. You all know that he, uh, applied for a rezone previously and was denied. I, I've looked at these as mutually exclusive, meaning that, uh, the A1 text amendments do apply to his current land now. But it doesn't preclude him from getting a rezone, as we've discussed, he and I, to a zone that would allow for residential land use, which is the intent of the change in the first place.
Okay, and there's no current pending applications that have been submitted for a cluster subdivision or anything on his lot?
No. Um, I have been talking to the planning commission, uh, about their, their thoughts about changing the current A1 zone to, uh, or excuse me, to rezone his property to a residential zone. They, we, we're still in that discussion. They're concerned that the general plan calls for that particular property to be O1, which is, um, open space. And so we would have to look at a general plan amendment to correct the general plan and then a rezone. And so there's a few steps, and again, mutually exclusive from the text amendment, um, although they, they both affect his property today. Uh, he still can pursue a
Rezone.
A rezone, uh, even if these changes are, are passed tonight.
Okay. And then I know there's probably a couple of other areas in the code that talk about it. I think it was 1023 maybe, where it talks about cluster subdivisions. that talk about it. Um, I think it was ten, twenty-three, maybe, where it talks about cluster subdivisions. So it may even talk about it in a couple of other spots, too. But I know that that's repealing it based off of this change. Um, but that, and we're, while, while we're doing those revisions, hopefully they'll get picked up.
Yeah, I, I noticed that um i- in two spots, and I think that um as we look at our comprehensive development code update, which we're going to launch into here quickly, we've selected a, a consultant for that. We'll, we'll correct all of those things.
I think that was all my questions.
Counselor Hawes?
Yeah, that, my, my question was going to be because ten twenty-three two says um, a cluster subdivision shall be permitted in all agricultural and residential zones.
Right, so, so this would repeal that and, and essentially, we would come back and correct the chapter twenty-three cluster subdivision in the development code update.
Okay. The second thing was a cluster um subdivision in an agricultural zone would require a minimum of fifteen acres.
Based on the minimum lot size of forty thousand, two-thirds of forty thousand.
And so I don't think that there's fifteen acres over there.
I, I think Mr. Purine has four acres.
So.
Counselor Stevens?
Is there an example? Can you give me an example of a cluster that's actually in existence? If you're aware of anything?
It, it's, it's a little redundant to a PRUD, which you're, which you probably are more familiar with. So Coleman view would be a PRUD, Planned Residential Unit Development. And really, the cluster subdivision is, is applied when they have these minimum lot sizes and that there's a element of the total acreage that's set aside for land pres- preservation or open space. So it is a, it's an old code reference. It's a little bit redundant to PRUDs, and so as we look at our comprehensive um zone update, we may look at just removing that altogether from our zoning code and just rely on either development agreements or PRUDs to guide what residential subdivisions look like. But I don't know of one in the city right now, because the, most of our subdivisions in the last ten years or so are probably PRUDs.
And I was thinking of probably, I don't know if you've been to Daybreak? They have like these areas where they built around like a little square in the middle of grass of a park. And that's what I picture for more like high-density, but.
That would be an end result of a cluster subdivision?
That you have like the dedicated recreation, whatever area away, and then all the buildings are clustered together.
Yep, that doesn't necessarily mean it is a cluster subdivision, but the way our code is written now is that would, that's what it would yield is, is preserved open space within homes. As Counselors Hawes mentioned, in fifteen acres, essentially.
Okay, my second question is um, amending the ordinance. Did this go through the planning commission?
Yes, uh, we're required to have a public hearing that was held on June tenth. There was no public comment at all based on these amendments, and the planning commission uh forwarded it to you unanimously for, for approval.
Can I just restate? I want to restate what I think I'm hearing then. So, so a current owner of, of these zones, the A one, A, A two, nothing in this change in language really precludes or truncates any rights that they would have under their existing elements here, because they could choose to rezone if that's what they wanted to do, or am I, did I hear that properly?
A little bit. So everything uh in the, th- there, there are permitted uses in every zone.
Right.
And so if you look at the redlined uh part of the, of your packet, we are proposing to remove some of those permitted uses today. Those that are um, what I'm proposing that are in, in conflict with a true agricultural uh use in his, in the zone. And so you could see that as a restriction, because um before today, you could apply for a cluster subdivision if you met all the requirements. If this was passed today, you wouldn't be allowed to do that, but you then could re- apply for a rezone for the same subdivision. And that's the more appropriate method um anyway, in my opinion, because we're applying residential standards to what they're proposing, instead of trying to fit a residential um use in an agricultural zone with an overlay and a bunch of conflicting information.
Because the wording that jumps out at me is uh in, in that language that we're striking with a temporary holding zone that may under, uh undergo the possibility of a more intensive urban type.
Yeah.
That's, that seems to me the, the key language, right, that we're striking?
And that is the fundamental um issue with the zone, is that it has become this kind of catch-all zoning designation for a bunch of land uses that really aren't compatible. And so by changing that purpose and intent to, to do the, to the red part where it says it's intended to support appropriate farming and the keeping of fowl and animal, that's an agricultural zone that still allows for single-family homes, uh, still allows for home occupations, fruit and vegetable stands, but eliminates large residential subdivisions as a, as a by right use. It doesn't mean that you couldn't take a, a, a portion of land in the A one zone and rezone it to a residential uh use. It just removes it as a by right use, puts it into a different category and, and removes a bunch of other non-compatible uses like um private parks and cemeteries.
Right.
I did, one other thing that I did notice is that you added the word non-commercial to the corral stable and was there something um before that?
No.
Did that replace something, or, because there's no, there's no capital letter that was deleted from that line?
Right, so that just said prior to the red non-commercial, just said corral, stable, or building.
Okay, um, so, so you're in, you're going to change it so that A one agriculture cannot have uh commercial corral. So if somebody had an A one, they couldn't board animals for someone else?
That's right. So A one is the smaller minimum lot size of the two zones. A two has a much larger mi- larger minimum lot size. This was a recommendation from the planning commission. They felt like the distinction was important, that the smaller lot size in A one would allow for non-commercial agricultural uses wh- wherein the larger lot sizes of the A two could.
But A two says that it will adopt everything in A one. So does, doesn't that like, isn't that kind of an oxymoron to say on one of them, you can't do it, but then you accept everything in one, but you can now?
Well, the, the higher standard is in the A two, so the more restrictive stuff would fold under the higher standards. And so yes, if you had a cor- a corral or a stable that was in the A two, it could be either non-commercial or commercial.
And then just one other comment, just based on the conversations that we've had. Mr. Cooper's conversations or advisory. He has no obligation to walk someone through the process or anything like that. So it's, all those phone calls are made and all that kind of stuff. It's you're helping. But if he doesn't fill out an application for a rezone, there's no obligation for us, so. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to clarify for Mike, too, on the rezone. The big difference is if someone wants to do a development for what they're currently zoned as, it's a much easier process. They can just do it pretty much, unless there's conditional uses, but if they want to switch to a new zone, they have to go through a whole process with the planning commission and us to get approval. So there's no guarantee
Right.
that they'll get it, because we have to evaluate and make our findings before we approve it. So it is a little trickier, but it's still possible if it fits.
Yeah, there's hurdles there, yeah.
And specifically for the, for Mr. Purine, the fact that the um the general plan says O one, we have to change the general plan, and then we would have to rezone.
Well, the general plan is a guideline. We're not, we're not bound, completely bound by the general plan, but it, it helps.
Right, because it is an adopted document that is guidance. We would do that two-step process to make sure that we're not actively rezoning things that are in con- conflict with it. So those things should mimic each other as things change uh over time. And it is a couple of additional steps um based on where they would be today in the case of the Purines um situation.
I absolutely agree. Logically, this, this makes sense to me. I, I understand where you're going here. I, I do have some reservation about current property owners that hold property with a certain zoning and certain rights under the, under this that we would be recluding um or with this change. So that's, that's my only concern.
And that's a good point. So uh, anything that is existing at the time of a zone change, so for instance, um, a cemetery, which is an allowable use today. If this zone was to be changed, then that cemetery would be considered a, a legal non-conforming use. So that right would cons- would uh persist until such time that the use changed. So let's say they demolished the cemetery and they wanted to turn it into a subdivision. The cemetery would be legally non-conforming until that point, and then they would have to come in and apply for the residential rezone and, and go from there.
Sure.
Yep.
Similar to agricultural being changed to residential, if the, such as the person has a large lot and has horses in their field behind them, they can continue to have horses, even though it's now zoned residential, until they no longer have horses, and then there are rules about how long they can go without horses before they lose that right. Is that?
Right, and so really, the, the property owners that this affects um specifically would be those who own fifteen acres or more that have the ability to, to apply the cluster subdivision permitted use today and meet the um twenty-seven thousand minimum um lot size. So any property owner in the A one underneath that really is not being um affected by the removal of a cluster subdivision uh right. Does that make sense?
It does. It does make sense.
Everything makes sense. I'm just the one that I'm struggling with is the non-commercial um uh corralling. I, I would have left it um to allow I mean, there are limits to how many animals you can have on how much land. Is that? You know, so, I mean, we're, and we're talking the smaller ones, but now we're saying that if Mr. Purine were to want to build a, a uh corral.
Well, it's not just him. He has four acres, so it wouldn't apply to him. It would be, it would be someone that has an acre.
An acre, yeah.
That doesn't have horses that says, hey, I'm, you can put your, for, I'll charge you twenty-five dollars a month for you to have your horses to eat my pasture down.
Right.
Can't do that anymore.
He can't do that now.
So if, I mean, if you don't like it, pull it out. You can, in, in the motion, you can just pull it out and strike it. And then people, I mean, with, I, and I, I agree with you, with the number of animals that we're allowed to have, it's, it's almost redundant. And we should be able to have, if you have an acre and you don't have horses, you should be able to have animals there to eat it down, or it's a problem for everybody.
There are other considerations when it comes to commercial business, parking, access, things like that, and so just keep that in mind. But if that's something that the council agrees with, then I'm, I, I think that's appropriate.
Go ahead. It's okay. It's not going to kill anybody.
I just, I mean, I can, I can only think of maybe three places. Well, as you go up South Weber, I, I'm, there's probably some up there, but you know, in and around residential areas that maybe Carl Cook's old house and that, you know, some of those that, that are, and those, these are ones that are kind of sprinkled amongst residential areas. Well, maybe a handful, maybe, maybe, maybe even close to a dozen now that I think about it, but that would even, I don't know, be in that scenario. That I, I, I know it's almost kind of obscure, but, and, and I think it's it's kind of sixes, because it's going to be controlled from one side or the other. But anyway, that's just.
I think one of the things, too, if someone raises a couple of beef, and they sell a half of a beef, then they become commercial. And if they have an acre with two cows, they can't do that. So, I mean, I, I think it's very obscure for especially like Mark said, for as many people as we've got in Riverdale. And, and we do, I joke around about the Ozarks of Riverdale. You know, we have, we have a lot of PRUDs, we have a lot of businesses, but you go up to places, they have raccoon problems. They have, you know, they're, they're living a different lifestyle on the out, on the outskirts of, of Riverdale. And I, I think when we control them, you know, I think of the Merrill's property, you know, um, it's a wonderful wedding venue, but we control it like, if it's in my neighborhood, I don't want it. I want them to be able to have their wedding venue up there. It's pretty dang cool, and it brings people into Riverdale and all the stuff, which we're, it's not part of today's thing, but if we control the world over things, it gets a little cumbersome for people. And I, I don't, I think it's a little bit of overreach.
Just curious, Mr. Brooks, any, any comment one way or the other on this?
No, no, we, we've been talking about this, uh, it's been probably a year now, just about cleaning it up. It's just, it was an old catch-all. We just dump stuff in there, and nobody ever looked at it for years, and it was just time to do that, and it just, I think it fits and it works more in line with standard procedures that we generally use and, and with our general plans, so.
You know, there was a, when I first got put on the planning commission almost twenty years ago, there was Mr. Daly, who was in, your predecessor, and then there was a part-time female, and I forget her name.
Jan Yurkina?
Yes, and we went through all of the usages and for the various zonings. And there was a lot of time spent on on A one, and truthfully, the biggest takeaway, my biggest takeaway is, is like what we're talking about, knowing what it entailed, knowing what they were. So some of the, because some of the terms were so old, uh, I mean, they date back thirty, forty, fifty years at, at that point. And, and so that we weren't even using those terms to, the people didn't even know what they were to even make a, an informed judgment as to whether or not they stay or go. And so as we talk about that, it, it's kind of deja vu again of, of what I remember from almost twenty years ago. And it was like, this is um you know, talking about these scenarios and these terms are, are dated. And so, yeah, this needs to be revisited from time to time, more often, maybe.
I'm not going to make the motion, but I agree with you on the commercial, non-commercial issue.
I really, yeah.
My mom, my mom had an acre, and she didn't have animals for years, and if we didn't have, if she didn't rent her pasture out to people, which would be considered commercial, and I doubt we're going to send Casey over there to say, you know, you're fifty bucks a month or whatever, because you got somebody's horse, but it is classified commercial. So, I mean, it's like, I don't, I don't want to see anybody with an acre doing a stable or whatever, especially like the Purines were to put. How many cows can they have with four acres? I mean, they could put a herd over there and cause issues with people's final fences, but I, I agree with you. Go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance number nine nine five, an ordinance amending Title Ten, Chapter Eight of the Riverdale City Code regarding agricultural zones A one and A two as presented in the po- in the packet, with one amendment, and that amendment being removing the word non-commercial in ten dash eight dash two in the third par- the fourth paragraph.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Three, two, one. Oh, can I second it?
You, you can.
Oh, I'll second it. Second. We have a motion and a second. Michelle, will you pull the council?
Kind of scared. Counselor Hansen?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Passes four to one. Moving on, a discussion regarding July first, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting. Mr. Brooks?
We just brought this up for discussion. I think probably the best way to handle this is we'll just wait and see what comes up. If we don't have much on the calendar, then we'll be reaching out to you to vote, to push that meeting into the second week or the second meeting of the month, so we do have stuff on that. or the second meeting of the month, so we do have stuff on that night.
I'd like to cancel it, just because we have probably the Riverdale band that night, I'm assuming, and we'll have the movie in the park.
So you would like to cancel?
I would like to, because we have two city events planned that night for Old Glory Days.
I thought you were the one that told us not to, to wait and see, so...
I was someone else.
Okay. I don't care either way, so...
Mainly because, like, I think it's good when we can go down and help if there's...
Yeah, there is stuff going on that night, so...
Participate, so I would choose to just cancel it, honestly.
Well, we have our Old Glory Day shirts that we can represent by then.
Yeah, I was working with the T-shirt person today. They will be delivered on the thirtieth.
Perfect.
So that might be, you'll have that day.
Okay.
That's just my preference, though.
Anybody else have any comments?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I like the band.
We just listed that as a discussion item, and I see three votes up there, so you'll be getting an email from us here shortly.
You know, it, we're approaching the summer solstice. We've got, it stays light till nine o'clock, so the movie's not starting till after nine. It's only seven.
Well, the concert starts earlier. That's the hard part.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's fine.
I like to be, we should be supportive, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I actually like the concert.
It was, it's, you know what, it couldn't work out better.
You know...
I think we should cancel when we have swim nights, too, so people always wonder why we're at one and have the swim nights, too.
When, when I was on the council initially, we were paid by the meeting, and so we were always looking to cancel meetings to save money, because then we didn't get paid, and the city saved money by not having them. But at the same time, we would never schedule another, I mean, it was like pulling teeth to schedule, schedule another meeting when we had important things to do.
That changed during the flood, when we were like, everybody get down with your boots, because River Glen's underwater. Oh, it's going to cost X amount for another meeting because there's flooding, things like that, so...
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I pushed the entire time I was on the council to do it that way, but they didn't do it until I got off. There was a lot of things I didn't do until I got off.
Any other comments?
That I pushed.
I would just, yeah, as far as staff goes, just express our appreciation to you guys. This is very time-consuming. Poor Cody, this, these last couple months are just brutal, but we're grateful for you taking care of us, and we'll have our meeting on the sixteenth. We do a little training session, and that's when they find out officially that they've gotten raises and things like that, so thank you very much for supporting us. I think I speak on behalf of everybody here, so it is very appreciated, and we love working here, and we know you back us up, and as long as things keep going well, we'll, I'll be happy, so thank you again.
Great. Moving on to comments. Any comments from the city council? No, city staff? Okay, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.